Hello, everybody. We are coming to you live from Hopkins Academy. This is Hadley Media. And I am Andy Morris Friedman. I don't know if anybody is watching, but if you are, you should come down here. Because live is better than television. Hi there. You have a question for me? Is it something you want to go out over the air on television? We'll be back after this short, uh, brief break. Uh, I'm number 18. We need 100 people to be in quorum. Hi there. What number are you? 52. A little more than half of 100. If we don't get a quorum of 100, that means we have to reschedule the meeting. And we don't want that. So please, if you're watching, come on down. Live is better than on television. Excuse me, what number were you? 71. Okay, so, uh, 30, 29 more to go. Any, uh, issues in town meeting, especially of interest to you tonight?
Uh, just the marijuana-growing questions are the issues. I think they're on the agenda.
Want to give us a preview of your thoughts?
Uh, well, I think the issue that's going to be discussed this evening is around growing and processing marijuana in a residential part of the town, although it's zoned as agricultural and residential. So I think we're going to be looking for an exception, or at least perhaps to postpone it until the spring, um, town meeting.
Okay, well, good luck. Uh, what inning do you think the Red Sox will be in when town meeting finishes?
I'm sorry?
What inning do you think the Red Sox will be in?
Uh, 5th inning.
Okay. Uh, what's your favorite place in Hadley?
Uh, the Hadley Diner on Route 9. Or I guess it's actually Johnny's now.
Okay, thanks. Hi there, what number are you? 78 and 79, okay. Any, uh, particular issues in town meeting tonight you're interested in?
I'd rather not say right now.
You'd rather not say? All right, well, we'll find out. Thank you. Hey, Richard?
Hey. How did Wilbur end up on the road?
Hi there, what number are you?
81.
81. Sure to 100. If you're not here, you should come on down. Live is better than television. Hey there, what number are you?
65.
Oh, 65. You were here early. Is there any particular, uh, issue in town meeting you're interested in?
Yeah, aren't you, Andy? You're the chess guy. My son does chess with you, or did chess with you. Um, we're here about the marijuana grow by law.
You want to give us a preview of your thoughts?
No.
Okay, well, you know, we're going to start Chess Club again in January. So, uh, right, right. But at the Hadley Library, so, uh, so check it out. Okay, we are getting there. Hi there. Hey, what number are you? 87. Have any, uh, particular issues in town meeting you want to talk about?
He's got to watch his cable, dog. Maybe I should get him another.
Yeah, probably.
Hey there. Oh, you're 65, you got here early.
They are, I can grab one if you want.
No, we're up to like 86. 86 is pretty close. How are the cookies? Come on down, get cookies from the Mothers Club. Hey, what number are you? What number? Oh, 101. Woohoo, we made it. Okay, town meeting can go on. We've reached 100 people. Hi there. We're killing time on television before town meeting starts.
I'm sorry.
We're killing time on the television before the town meeting actually starts. How are things on building committee?
Uh, slow. We, uh, we need to schedule a meeting.
Any issues at town meeting, um, you're especially interested in tonight?
Uh, not necessarily. Um, you know, just doing my part.
Hi, uh, what inning do you think the Red Sox will be in when town meeting finishes?
Uh, I think it might be done.
Think so? Oh, well, we'll have to see. Uh, what's your favorite place in Hadley?
Uh, jeez, there's too many.
Yeah, I agree. All right, well, thanks. Any particular issues at tonight in town meeting you're interested in?
Uh, no, just speed it up so I can get home for dessert.
Well, thanks. All right. We should be beginning shortly. I know I keep saying that. We will, uh, kick it over to the upstairs broadcast booth as soon as town meeting starts. You don't want to miss a single exciting moment. Don't worry, Ginger, I'm not going to ask to interview you. I know better. I'm going to pretend I didn't see you. All right. Well, what number were you?
Number five?
Uh, what number of person?
I'm not.
You're not? Oh, you're not? Well, I'm sure you're still a good person.
I have something on the agenda here with my salary.
I can bring my laptop and go downstairs.
Right now, I'm...
All right, well, good luck. All right, well, we'll have to see how that works out. Okay, it looks like Brian is ready to start. So, uh, we will kick it on over. Have a good town meeting, everybody. Every town meeting without a fistfight is a good one. And we'll see how good this one turns out to be.
Thank you, Ben. Welcome, everyone. Um, there's a few more people coming in while they're getting their seats. I have an announcement to make, and it's from the Hadley Mothers Club. And it's a nicotine addiction. It's sponsored by the Mothers Club. It's going to be on October 27 to 8:30, um, here at Hopkins Academy. And it's about vaping, nicotine, and other substances. So it's being sponsored by the Mothers Club, and we thank them for that, and they just wanted Welcome, everyone. Today is October 18th of 2018, and this is the special town meeting. The warrant has been signed, posted, and disseminated. And at this time, I will go over some ground rules before I call the meeting to order. First of all, we have two microphones up in the front. If you wish to speak to a motion or article, please approach the microphone. I ask that you propose the question to me, the moderator, not to an individual. I'm also going to try and keep the time limit for each person speaking to around three minutes. And I ask that you not speak a second time to a motion or article until everyone has had a chance to speak. So at this time, I will introduce the two head tables up here. Starting on my left, Selectman Waskevitz, Selectman Phil, Selectwoman, um, Egan, Chairwoman, Chugel, Selectman Stanley, Town Attorney Joel Bard. On my right, Town Clerk Jess Spangable, Chair of the Finance Committee Amy Feiden, Ms. Kathy Zaturka, Ms. Valerie Hood, and sitting to my far right is Town Administrator David Nixon. So at this time, I would like everyone to please rise and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you very much. Can I get a head count on how many we have here?
136.
Thank you. Article 1. It's a lengthy article. It's for the annual budget adjustments. So I will give everybody, everybody a few minutes to read through it. And then I will read the motion. Article 1 was, uh, passed in favor by the Select Board, 5 to 0, and it was supported in favor. Finance Committee recommends 3-0. So the motion for Article 1 reads, "Move that the town adjust the fiscal 2019 budget as delineated in Article 1 of the Special Town Meeting Warrant for October 18th, 2018, and incorporated by references herein." Do I have a motion? Do I have a second? Motion's been moved and seconded. I will call on Town Administrator David Nixon.
Good evening. This article makes the final adjustments to FY19 budget. Two things to point out is that the budget is balanced, and it preserves all the services that we voted upon at the annual town meeting. So what we agreed to do at the annual town meeting is preserved here. This budget change, this, the changes relate to four different things here. The first is pay for the union employees. At the time of the annual town meeting, we had not completed our negotiations, so the, the union employees are now paid for this budget. The second is the non-union employees get a 2% colon. The third is housekeeping adjustments, such as the insurance line, um, and the debt and conservation commission. And then finally, the final adjustments are for new information received after the annual town meeting, such as property and liability insurance and workers' compensation. Are there any questions?
Edwin Montusco, 116 Stockbridge Street. I was under the impression that, uh, from the appropriate, uh, sum of money from the sewer receipts, the water receipts, the sewer reserve, and water reserve, that those monies were to be set aside for those projects.
That's correct. So those monies are going for water and sewer, uh, operational.
Improvements to the systems or just to run the department?
Running the department, and there are some, uh, improvements to the system which are routine, such as water valve replacement, uh, I&amp;I work at the sewer department. There are some capital articles which are coming up in Article 6, which will relate to the sewer system and water system as well.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Nixon. If there isn't any further discussion, I'll take a vote. Once again, it's a 2/3 majority. All in favor of Article 1? I'll read, I'll read the motion one final time, just so everybody's clear. Move that the town adjust the fiscal 2019 budget as delineated in Article 1 of the Special Town Meeting Warrant for October 18th, and incorporated by references herein. All in favor, please signify with your red card. Thank you. Anyone opposed? Do we have any abstentions? Motion passes 135 to 1. Article 2? Article 2 deals with revolving funds. Once again, I will read it. Article 2 reads, "To see if the town will vote to amend Section 86-9, Article 5 of the Chapter 86 Code of the Town of Hadley, related to revolving funds pursuant to the provisions of General Law C44," I don't know what that symbol means, "53E and a half, by adding the following. So, description, after-school program. Department is the Park and Rec. Purpose is to support children's recreational programs and personnel associated with program enrollment. Source of the funds is going to be fees associated with hosting and administering children's recreational programs. Annual expense allowed is $45,000. Maximum allowable balance at year-end on June 30th is $20,000." This article was recommended by the Finance Committee, 3 to 0, and the Select Board, 5 to 0. The motion for this article reads, "Move that the town adjust the accounts as printed in the warrant as delineated in Article 2 of the Special Town Meeting Warrant for October 18th, 2018, and incorporated by references herein." Do I have a motion? Do I have a second? Motion's been moved and seconded. Once again, Town Administrator David Nixon will speak to this.
This article establishes one more revolving account for the Park and Rec Commission, particularly for, uh, directed towards after-school programs for, uh, programs that were formally supported by Hadley Kids Incorporated. Uh, all the planned fees are going to cover all the planned expenses, so there's no impact upon the tax rate. There is going to be a follow-up article related to this, uh, at the annual town meeting. So this is the first of two steps associated with this project.
Do we have any questions for the motion for Article 2? Seeing none, once again, all in favor, please signify with your red card. Thank you. Anyone opposed? Any abstentions? One abstention. So Article 2 is going to pass 135, 0, with one extension. Thank you. Moving along, Article 3. Fund balances. Article 3, as you can see, there's quite a few special town meetings and annual town meetings where there was articles that were voted, and there's balances still associated with those, and I'll let you read through them. I would like to make a note that if you look in the second box there, from annual town meeting 2014, the fire truck pumper, uh, for $761,250, that is being deleted. We are not going to vote on that tonight, and I'll read that into the motion, but just to give you the heads up, that is being deleted out of that article. So, the motion. The motion for Article 3. Move that the town adjust the accounts as printed in the warrant as delineated in Article 4 of the Special Town, 3, that's the title. Article 3, the Special Town Meeting Warrant for October 18th, and incorporated by the references herein. And there's also, move that the town amend Article 3 of the Special Town Meeting Warrant for October 18th, 2018 by deleting the reference to borrowing authorization for the fire truck pumper. Do I have a motion? Do I have a second? Article has been moved and seconded. I would like to call on Chairwoman Chugel to answer any questions.
This is a housekeeping article that does two things. Its first purpose is to clean up old balances left over in a number of articles where the project is done and any money remaining is unproductive. Funds are being returned back to the source from which they were appropriated. The second purpose is to amend an old borrowing authorization where borrowing was approved, but the amount actually needed was less. When we have excess borrowing in these old articles, we are required to report annually to the Massachusetts Department of Revenue and the Federal Securities Exchange Commission any unproductive balances. There is no impact on our taxes. So the summary of transfers, capital stabilization will be $22,252. Water reserves, $4,700. Sewer reserves, $4,700. Sewer impact accounts, $744.20. Community preservation act, $83,500. The other one's to the other article, so not there.
Okay, and Article 3 was recommended, uh, 3 to 0 by the Finance Committee and 5 to 0 by the Select Board. Because it deals with stabilization, it will be a 2/3 majority. No, I think, I don't think, I moved it that way so we don't have to vote you in. So if there isn't any questions or concerns, I will ask that if you're in favor of Article 3, you signify with your red card. Thank you. Article 3 passes 135 to 1 with no abstentions. Article 4. Reads, "To see if the town will hold to transfer from sewer impact fees $80,000 to sewer reserves for expenses related to an emergency sewer line repairs, or take any action relative thereto." This was voted by the Select Board, Select Board recommends it 4, 0, with one extension. Finance Committee recommends it 3, 0. The motion reads, "Move that the town transfer from sewer impact fees $80,000 to sewer reserves for expenses related to emergency sewer line repairs." Do I have a motion? Do I have a second? It's been moved and seconded. Discussion. At this time, I will call on Selectman Phil.
So as most people are aware, this past summer, we discovered some work on the sewer lines on Route 9 that required some emergency repairs. The good news is we were able to save several hundred thousand dollars by minding them in place, but we did have to pay for the, the work quickly and get it done before it became a larger issue. So we spent $80,000 on the sewer reserves to cover that work, and so we're going to return $80,000 back into sewer reserves.
Any further questions relating to Article 4? Seeing none, all in favor, please signify with your red card. Thank you. Opposed? Article 4 passes unanimously. Article 5. Article 5 reads, "To see if the town will hold to transfer from free cash $29,952 into the capital stabilization fund, or take any action relative thereto." Article 5 was recommended by the Select Board, 4 to 1, with no abstentions. If it's recommended by the Finance Committee, 3 to 0, with no abstentions. The motion for Article 5 reads, "Move that the town transfer from free cash $29,952 into the capital stabilization fund." Do I have a motion? Do I have a second? It's been moved and seconded. I will call on Selectman Stanley to speak to this article.
Evening. This article transfers available free cash to the capital stabilization account to fund part of the capital plan in the next article. There is no impact on taxes for this article. Current balance in capital stabilization is $5,759. The transfer that was approved in Article 3 is $22,300. Plus, transfer from free cash for this article is $29,952, making for a total balance of 58,011. Are there any questions?
Thank you. Yeah, we're ready, moved and seconded. Thank you. Any questions or concerns?
Michelle Morris Friedman, 45 Roosevelt Street. I'm just curious, um, about, could somebody speak to why they do this, and somebody who opposes it, speak why they voted against it?
So you want one forum and one person to speak against it also?
Well, no, 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 I mean, I'm just curious, you know, what's the advantage, I guess, we're just trying to increase our capital stabilization. I'm pretty curious as to why they protested, because we voted against it, voted against it.
Who put the second vote out slightly?
It's an abstention. No, it wasn't?
No, it was an abstention. Oh, on this one, it was an abstention, sorry. I was reading ahead and thought, and I...
Oh, no.
It was the other one, yep.
That was Article 4. This is Article 5.
They obviously weren't very vigorous in their opposition. All right. Are we going to, are we going to be able to answer?
No, not at this time.
Not at this time?
Not here.
All right, sorry. Any other questions? Seeing none, all in favor of our, the motion for Article 5, please signify with your red Thank you. Thank you. Article 5 passes 135 to 1 with no abstentions. Article 6. Article 6 is a very lengthy article, so I am going to allow everyone, um, and there are two separate motions within Article 6. Several, seven separate motions. So I will let everybody read through the article on your own, and then, um, I will deal with the motions. And these are capital by nature, so they require a 2/3 majority. So I'll give you a few minutes. So I'll give you a few minutes. Okay, Mrs. Morris, do you, um, article five, uh, there's a misprint on that. The article six that we're on right now was one that I had abstained from because of the water and the DPW issues that are in. And I also wanted to put some of these off for annual town review. So that's, that's really one. That should be 5-0-1.
Four, zero.
Thank you, John. Okay, so article six, we have quite a few articles there, and I will start by reading the motions individually. And once again, um, Select and Stanley will be speaking to these, and they do require a two-thirds majority. These are supported by the Finance Committee, 3-0, um, for everyone except for the town hall staff vehicle, and that vote was two to one. They recommended that, and I'll deal with that when we get to it. Capital planning recommends it 4-0, and the Select Board is 4-0, one on the DPW related, um, issues, and then 5-0 on the others. So, motion 6A. Move that the town transfer $8,000 from capital stabilization for software and hardware for the assessors department. Do I have a motion? Okay. So we're gonna read, there's gonna be eight parts to motion 6A. All cash. Okay. Thank you. So the first eight under 6A are gonna be all from cash, and then the rest of the articles, uh, motions would be a borrowing, so I'm gonna keep them together. Number one, move that $8,000 from capital stabilization for software and hardware for the assessors office. Number two, $9,000 from capital stabilization for an evidence locker for the police department. Three, $14,000 from capital state stabilization for a study of the comprehensive slash classification plan for the Select Board. Four, $5,000 from water reserves and $5,000 from sewer reserves for building repair for Department of Public Works. Five, $30,000 from sewer reserves for the sewer line assessment for the Department of Public Works. Six is $25,000 from water reserves for access and clearing of the water tanks for the Department of Public Works. Seven, $25,000 from water reserves for reconditioning of the Callahan wells for the Department of Public Works. Number eight, $15,000 from Hadley Media reserves for relocation expenses for Hadley Media. And number nine, $27,000 from capital stabilization for an HVAC ventilation and dampers at the public safety complex for the police and fire department. Do I have a motion? Do I have a second? I will call on Select and Stanley.
All right, there's a lot of individual points here, so I'm just gonna go through them and then ask for questions for each one so that we can kind of keep it together. And if there are no questions, let's move on to the next one. The first, number one, assessors' software and hardware upgrades are necessary to perform assessing functions in the next year. This is an upgrade to the current assessors' software and one that they need to do because the current version is outdated within a year, so they need to upgrade the soft, upgrade the software. Does anyone have any questions on that? Next one is the police department, um, evidence locker, and this is a upgrade to their current evidence locker and will add to security and overall, uh, safety, security of the evidence stored at the public safety complex. Any questions on that? Okay, um, next one, number three, uh, the Select Board asks that the employee classification and compensation plan be reviewed and updated. Uh, this has been done internally a couple of times since, I believe, what was it, 2001 was the last one was adopted, David?
1998.
1998 was the last time this was kind of reviewed and adopted by the town, so, um, we're hoping this will kind of be a new benchmark for employee classification and compensation, um, and will be done by a third party as opposed to being done within the town. Any questions on that? Okay. Uh, number four, the gable ends of the DPW garage need to be repaired. This helps protect the mechanic shop and store equipment, vehicles, tools, and supplies. That's about all I know on that one. Do you have any questions on that?
The side way garage here to the DPW, what do you, which one are you on?
The gable end, end to the DPW?
Well, why are you taking sewer reserves? Is that any of that money on the sewer impact fee? Because you transferred money from the sewer impact into sewer reserves. Sewer impact is specifically...
It's not impact, it's just the reserves.
Yeah, but you, before you transferred money from sewer impact to reserves, I don't know what's happening with that.
That was article four. We transferred sewer impact, but that was to pay for the repairs of the sewer line that was done last year.
Right.
That doesn't have to do with this, this article.
But there's absolutely no impact fee to be used in the repairs.
I believe not. I, yes, yes. No, no impact fees in that?
No.
Good. Thank you. Any other questions? Um, number five is sewer line along Route 9 need to be surveyed to assess the need for future repair replacement. Uh, this is a plan that the past DPW director wanted to put into place, where we allocate a certain amount of funds every year to inspect the sewer lines throughout town. Um, these are some of the most, uh, higher priority lines to inspect, and the similar inspection last year saved the town a lot of money. The article we just did, they were able to line the pipes in place as opposed to excavating and putting in new pipes. So hoping that this plan will be able, will allow us to line pipes throughout the town instead of have to perform emergency repairs. You have a question on that?
Well, not on that specific one, so.
Okay, okay. Oh, go ahead.
So.
Oh, you need to state your name and address.
It's Middle Street, Hadley. It's probably a stupid question, but why would Route 9 infrastructure that benefits all of us in the town be subsidized by just people who are on water or sewer? Why isn't it something that's on the town wide?
Yeah, this, this is paid for from sewer reserves.
Right, and where does the sewer reserve money come from?
That comes from people paying for the sewer.
Right. So what percentage of town people are on sewer?
It's a low percentage, yeah.
Correct, so the low percentage that's on sewer is paying for infrastructure on, not for the whole town. Do I understand that correctly?
The users of the sewer are paying for that infrastructure.
For the whole town.
Well, they're the only ones using the sewer.
Really? So, everybody that's on Route 9, all the businesses that are on Route 9, that aren't tax, that aren't the sewer users, that, what if, it's like 10%? I don't even know what the percentage is.
They don't like sewer users.
On Route 9, yes, but, so, I don't ever understand why infrastructure is always on sewer or water instead of town wide. Does anybody?
This, so the alternative would be for your property taxes or whatever to go pay for the sewer line that's on.
But that would push it through the whole town instead of just on people who are on sewer or water. It's just a, just a question. I've never really kind of understood.
Okay, six years I've been here, we've had this discussion, and because of the businesses and the amount they do pay.
Yep.
Uh, we, we've had them on around quite a few times over the last six years, whether to take some of these major infrastructure problems that we are having and take it out of taxation. So in the near future, we may at some point, uh, decide to take some of this repair work on the water and on the sewer side, uh, if we can't get grant money for it, to take it out of taxation because of the amount of money that's being depleted from the water and sewer rates. Does that explain a little bit better?
Yep, yep. Okay, so looking into it. Thank you.
Yeah, I'd like to speak to that. I was previous sewer commissioner. We put together, was, uh, was actually the author of sewer impact fees. And sewer impact fee was to subsidize, um, the sewer system. And how that worked was any new, um, business or residential would pay an impact, so that would lessen the payment from the sewer users. And everyone in the town is not on sewer. I mean, I asked back when I was sewer commissioner years ago for monies from the town to upgrade the sewer mainline, because the sewer mainline on Route 9 that the businesses, uh, use and monies that they pay generate a lot of tax revenue. Originally, that sewer line was put in there to develop the area there for businesses. But sewer users are gonna end up, the way things are going, they're gonna be paying more for sewer and water than their, uh, real estate taxes. That's, that's where it's all going.
I just, I want to get us back on track to talk about, um, you know, sewer impact fees or, or, you know, infrastructure upgrades. That really isn't pertaining to the motion that we're discussing right now. That's a bigger picture discussion that we'd like to have, so I'd really like to keep us focused on the current motion.
Go ahead. Well, Dave Woskebitz, 126 Mill, um, just reiterating what the previous speaker was trying to say. Basically, everybody benefits from this, the taxes in town, and, uh, 10% are paying for the improvements to benefit everybody, so that's one of those things that should probably be looked at when it's infrastructure that everybody benefits from, even though you don't get the sewer benefit, you're benefiting from the taxes by allowing development in that area. So that was the point of the previous. Thank you.
I'm gonna move on. Andy, you're waiting until the end? Survey, okay. Number six, uh, the approaches and roadways to the water tanks need to be cleared and made accessible. Um, these are the big water tanks in town, they haven't been cleared in a while, and just want to maintain that road. I don't know if there are any questions on that.
Need a poller to press due, are those on Mount Warner?
Yeah, they're the ones on Mount Warner.
But I'm up there every day and it's clear. And I've been just wondering why they're saying $25,000 to get your access, it's already clear. I might have made Nike not quite. Okay, those I don't know. But I know I'm.
Is that the one they're talking about, John? I thought it was one on Mount Warner. Two on Mount Warner, one on, one on Mount Holyoke, and it was clear, unfortunately.
But it's also, um, DCR has kept it clear, so I'm just wondering why it would be $25,000 for a roadway that's clear up to the point of the, the two green wells.
Yeah, and I don't know the condition of the road on the Mount Holyoke wells.
Yeah, those I don't, but it was.
And I think it's making sure that road is easily accessible, because I know there's possibly in a few years, we're gonna have to reline the tanks and do a bunch of work on them, so kind of preparation for that.
But the road is already, I mean, it's a little swampy, but it's accessible.
It's real smooth on the lighter side.
Yeah.
Quite, quite deep wash though, I believe.
I mean, if it's, if it's during the, a really muddy season.
We got a lot of rain this year, so it's.
Yeah, well, like I said, we're up there almost every day, and it's pretty quick.
All right, thank you. Next one is from Water. Uh, the number one Callahan well needs to be upgraded or repaired in order to preserve water quality. This is a scheduled procedure. This is kind of a regular maintenance item that's in the capital plan. Any questions on that? Number eight, for Hadley Media, as part of a library and senior center project, Hadley Media will need to be moved and reconnected to the cable television network. That's what those expenses are for. Any, and it's coming out of the Hadley Media reserves. Any question on that? Then the final one here is the upstairs HVAC system at the public safety complex needs repair and upgrades in order to function properly. Um, this has been an ongoing issue. The building's 25 years old and just a maintenance item that needs to be addressed. 20 years old, thank you. Any questions on that?
Sandy Morris, 45 Rosedale Street. Could you please give us the current balances on the reserve funds that we're spending this money from and what the total amount of spending will do to the, uh, what, what the new balance will be after the spending?
Yeah, pause, David. Okay, so, do you have any ending results?
It's right here.
First page, two. So, yeah. Sewer receipts is 977-903, water receipts 124-155, oh, 1,245,155, sorry. Uh, sewer reserves, 148,941. Water reserves, 10,000. All right, sorry. Sewer impact is 224, 181,86. And there are no expenses here out of sewer impact. Um, stabilization is 2,103,169.20. Can you do the math here? No capital stabilization? No, that's later, okay. Water stabilization, $53,374.25.
I think the current balances will be enough. You don't have to.
Okay, you don't want to do the math. Okay, okay, I'm sorry. Capital stabilization, $5,761.39. OPEB is 1,157,533.79. CPA unallocated is 1,782,697.81. Water reserves, 1,177,447. Sewer reserves is 313,058. Cable reserves, 219,926. Anything else?
Any more questions about any of those nine items? Hearing none. All in favor, please signify with your red card. Thank you. Opposed? One. Abstentions? None. So, motion 6A passes 136 to 1 with one abstention. Moving on. The motion for 6B is for the staff car. This is going to be borrowing within the levy. And there was a change last night at the select board meeting. And so I'm going to read the change into the motion. The motion reads, move that the town appropriate $30,000 to pay the cost of the vehicle for the building inspector, including the payment of all costs incidental and related thereto. And that to meet this appropriation, the treasurer, with approval of the select board, is authorized to borrow said amount under and pursuant to Chapter 44, Section 7.1 of the general laws or pursuant to any other enabling authority to issue bonds or notes of the town therefore. Any premium received by the town upon the sale of any bonds or notes approved by this vote, lest any such premium apply to the payment of the cost of insurance issuance of such bonds or notes may be applied to the payment of costs approved by this vote in accordance with Chapter 44, Section 20 of the general laws, thereby reducing the amount authorized to be borrowed to pay such costs by a like amount. Do I have a motion? Do I have a second? Motion's been moved and seconded, and once again, I will call on Select and Stanley. Sorry. This article here was approved 5-0 by the select board and was recommended 2-4, 1 against by the finance committee.
So, this motion is now to borrow for a new vehicle for staff and building inspector use. The current vehicle is a 2002 Grand Marquis. It's in a little rough shape right now. This is a planned replacement that's been in planning for quite some time, but hasn't been yet to the stage where it's been approved. And borrowing for this will be within the levy, so there is no impact on taxes. Any questions?
Just what does a building inspector's office generate in funds?
I don't know that number off the top of my head. Do we have that, David? Building inspector's office, what do they generate in funds?
They generate above $100,000 annually.
Above $100,000 annually?
So if the building inspector generates $100,000, why is the taxpayer paying to borrow money when he generates this money?
His fees go into the general fund. So this comes out of that.
Why, why isn't it that that funded doesn't buy a vehicle? And it comes out of taxes?
He doesn't have any revolving fund or anything like that to be able to keep money from year to year.
That's how this looks like to me. You guys, Rob Peter to pay Paul.
Anyone else?
Once again, because this is borrowing within the levy, it'll be a two-thirds majority. All in favor, signify with your red card. Thank you. Opposed? Thank you. Any abstentions? Motion 6B passes 131 to 7 with zero abstentions. Motion 6C is for a police cruiser, I believe. Motion reads, move that to town appropriate $47,000 to pay the cost of a cruiser for the police department, including the payment of all costs incidental and related thereto. And that to meet this appropriation, the treasurer, with the approval of the select board, is authorized to borrow said amount under and pursuant to Chapter 44, Section 7.1 of the general laws or pursuant to any other enabling authority and to issue bonds or notes of the town therefore. Any premium received by the town upon the sale of any bonds or notes approved by this vote, lest any such premium apply to the payment of the cost of the issuance of any such bonds or notes may be applied to the payment of costs approved by this vote in accordance with Chapter 44, Section 20 of the general laws, thereby reducing the amount authorized to be borrowed to pay any such costs by a like amount. Do I have a motion? Do I have a second? Once again, this was approved 5-0 by the select board and 3-0 by the finance committee. And I will once again call on Select and Stanley.
This motion borrows to pay for a new planned police cruiser replacement. And borrowing for this will be within the levy. I don't know if there are any questions. It's a straightforward replacement.
How many cruisers does Hadley own now?
I'd have to refer to the public safety department for that. I don't know off the top of my head.
Is this new cruiser replacing the old cruiser?
Yes, it is.
What's happening to the old cruiser?
I'm not sure, but I believe that cruiser it's replacing is, is not, I'd have to double check.
Well, I, I look at there, there's a lot of old cruisers there, you know. I don't know if you guys are starting to junkyard here or what you're doing. But if the cruiser's no good, get it to hell out of the town. Not be accumulating all this cruisers. How many cruisers?
The chief can address it.
So, the junky cruisers that you see in the back, I know people drive by and they see them sitting in the back lot. Yes, they are old. They are junky cruisers. The reason that we keep them is for detail cars. They are not usable patrol vehicles. We keep them to keep idle hours off of our good cars and make them last longer. I put a few bullet points together. And maybe I'll answer some folks' questions right now by going through these, if you, if you want me to. But yeah, the, the old cruisers that you see in the back, if they get to the point where we just can't keep them running anymore, we usually get rid of them. We'll donate them to different schools so they can use them in their auto body departments. Or we will just completely junk them. But we have purchased cars used, we have purchased, we've gotten grants for cars and things like that just to keep our fleet lasting longer and in the best possible condition. But yes, those cruisers that you see along the back, those are not usable cars. We keep them just for details.
Chief?
Yes.
How, how many?
We have, Mitch, you have a number? Twelve.
Twelve? How many cops do you have? Twelve?
Fifteen full-time police officers. We have three patrols, that's one of the bullet points. We have three patrols every day now. We've added police officers over the course of the last several years. So that's three cruisers that have to drive every day. We cannot run them 24 hours a day. If we ran cruisers 24 hours a day, we'd be replacing the entire fleet every two or three years or something like that. So we stagger them, and we have to continue to purchase cars in order to keep them going. Several years ago, Chief Huckowitz sat down with the Capitol Committee. And when they pulled, there used to be a single cruiser in every operational budget. They decided to pull that out and start to put it into Capitol. When they did that, they went over the entire state of the cruiser fleet. How many officers there were, how many shifts they were driving, how many miles go on per year. And they took a lot of time and effort to figure that out. What they determined was that they were so far behind in keeping cruisers in good working order that for the foreseeable future, they were going to buy one car guaranteed every single year. And every other year, they were going to buy two because they had so much catch-up to do. That sentiment has been echoed by every Capitol Committee that I have been to since I have been chief. Because each and every year, Mitch and I, Mitch was assigned as the cruiser fleet officer by Chief Huckowitz. So he's been doing this for several years now. Each and every year, we bring the Capitol Committee a new PowerPoint with every cruiser we own, the mileage of every car, the maintenance that goes into them. And every year, they agree that this is, this was, every year they have agreed so far that this is the schedule that we should maintain. We are currently in a position, because of the grants that we've gotten, because of the fundraising that we've done to buy different cars, and because of the used vehicles that we purchased from other departments to fill in gaps where we have cruisers die on us, we're currently in a position where we no longer need to buy two cars every other year. We can, we can, but we must, we have to still continue to buy a single car. We put approximately 20,000 to 25,000 miles on a car each and every year. And as I said, we have three officers regularly on patrol each and every shift. On the weekends, we add up to four or five. So we have to have at least four or five cruisers available almost at all times. And like I said, the detail cars that we keep, keep the other cars lasting longer. The last thing we want is to end up paying more in maintenance costs to keep these cars alive than the car is actually worth. So when we hit that point, that's when it goes. But the cars that you see in the back are detail cars. With the purchase of this cruiser, we are going to be able to get rid of three, John. They're going to go. So, just, and just to give you an idea, the ones that we're going to be getting rid of, how long we've been able to keep them going, they are our last, two of them are our last two crown victorious. They don't even make them any better. So, they're seven years old, I believe. When I took over, we were driving cars that had upwards of 160,000 to 170,000 miles on responding to calls in those cars. For those of you who know anything about accreditation, accredited police departments get rid of their cars when they tick 79,999 miles. 80,000 miles, they're gone. We were running cars in 170. We don't want to do that anymore. We, we're not going with 80. We're not going that far, but we are trying to keep within a reasonable mileage to make sure that the value of the car, we're not spending too much on maintenance, and we can keep them going so that we can get to calls.
Thank you, chief. Select and Phil would also like to speak to this, and then.
So I saw some confused looks about the term detail. And if you, many mornings longer at night, you'll see several police cars with construction crews. And those are generally the details that they're talking about. Where a police car may not be in good enough shape, where an officer is on patrol wants to, you know, have his life depend on that car, it's good enough to have lights running and just be sitting there idling at a construction site during the day. And those details also bring in revenue for the police department as well with hourly fees that the officers are paid through contractors and other, other sources as well. So, detail cars don't have to be the greatest, but as long as they still run, they're good enough to run lights and to sit there at a construction site.
And every, every detail also brings in 10% administrative fee to the town as well. The cars that we run, as John pointed out, they are, they are bad. We had one that actually lit on fire at them twice in one year. But quickly put out and no issues.
I'm Linda Sanderson, I'm town treasurer. This is for the moderator and Stanley. If, when you leave the motions, you can also give the recommendation of the Capitol Planning Committee. You're giving them for the select board and the finance. But for borrowing, I also need the recommendation of the.
I don't have it, but if I have it, I'll leave it.
Okay, no, it is in the regular warrant. If it could be read as well, then it will be in the minutes.
All right.
Because I need that for the bar.
Thank you. Any other questions about the police cruiser? Linda, back on the, on the front page, I did, I thought I read that it was supported 4-0 by Capitol Planning. I may not have, but. Yes, thank you. Once again, see none. All in favor of motion 6C for the new police cruiser? Please signify with your red card. Thank you. Opposed? Thank you. Abstentions? 6C passes 137 to 1 with no abstentions. Motion 6D, skid unit, once again, borrowing within the levy. Move that to town appropriate $31,000 to pay the cost of acquiring a skid unit for the use of the fire department, including the payment of all costs incidental and related thereto. And that to meet this appropriation, the treasurer, with the approval of the select board, is authorized to borrow said amount under and pursuant to Chapter 44, Section 7.1 of the general laws or pursuant to any other enabling authority and to issue bonds or notes of the town therefore. Provided however, that the vote taken hereon shall be expressly contingent upon approval by the voters to exclude the amounts to pay for the bonds or notes authorized for this purpose from the provisions of Proposition 2.5 so-called. Any premiums received by the town upon the sale of any bonds or notes approved by this vote, lest any such premium apply to the payment of the cost of issuance of such bonds or notes may be applied to the payment of costs approved by this vote in accordance with Chapter 44, Section 20 of the general laws, thereby reducing the amount authorized to be borrowed to pay any such costs by a like amount. Do I? There's been a mistake here. Give it all of that? Thanks, Chris. All right, I'll reread it. Disregard what I just said, I will reread the motion for 6D. Move that the town appropriate $31,000 to pay any costs of acquiring a skid unit for the use of the fire department, including the payment of all costs incidental and related thereto. And that to meet this appropriation, the treasurer, with the approval of the select board, is authorized to borrow said amount under and pursuant to Chapter 44, Section 7.1 of the general laws or pursuant to any other enabling authority and to issue bonds or notes of the town therefore, so-called. Any premium received by the town upon the sale of any bonds or notes approved by this vote, lest any such premium apply to the payment of the cost of the issuance of such bonds or notes may be applied to the payment. bonds or notes, may be applied to the payment of costs approved by this vote in accordance with chapter forty-four, section twenty of the general laws, thereby reducing the amount authorized to be borrowed to pay any such costs by a like amount. Do I have a motion? Do I have a second? Once again, I will call on Selectman Stanley.
I think I'm gonna call the fire chief, just to explain this, if he doesn't mind, just because I know this is for some modifications to a brush truck, but I'm gonna hack it apart and compare it to his explanation, so I'll let him explain.
This is actually for the purchase of a vehicle and a skid unit to replace our nineteen-ninety-four F-350 that you may have seen parked at the station that has a blown transmission. It was a vehicle received for free from the state under the access property program that will be going into auction. We were hoping to get a few more years out of it, unfortunately, the cost to fix it, it's, it's too high for the nineteen, on nineteen-ninety-four. We switched that out from our nineteen-fifty-two brush truck that just went to auction, so we have moved all the stuff into the Ford F-350 nineteen-ninety-four, which the transmission, or the transmission blew, so. This is for a used pickup and the skid unit that goes into it, a skid unit basically, so if we have another brush fire on the mountain, we can actually get up the mountain with this pickup truck, it has, it'll probably have around two-hundred-and-fifty to five-hundred gallons of water, a foam cell in it, hose reel, basically just slides into the back of the truck. Any questions? Thank you.
Thank you, Chief. Seen no questions, all in favor of six D, please raise your red card. Thank you. Anybody opposed? Any abstentions? Motion six D passes unanimously. Thank you. Moving on. Six E, DPW dump truck. Move that the town appropriate eighty-five thousand to pay the cost of acquiring an F-550 dump truck for the use of the Highway Division of the Department of Public Works, including the payment of all costs incidental and related thereto, that to meet this appropriation, the treasurer with the approval of the select board is authorized to borrow said amount under and pursuant to chapter forty-four, section seven, one of the general laws, or pursuant to any other enabling authority into issue bonds or notes of the town therefore, provided however that the vote taken here under shall be expressly contingent upon the approval by the voters to exclude the amounts to pay for the bonds or notes authorized for this purpose from the provisions of proposition two and a half so-called. Any such premium received by the town upon the sale of any bonds or notes approved by this vote, lest any such premium apply to the payment of the cost of issuance of such bonds or notes, may be applied to the payment of costs approved by this vote in accordance with chapter forty-four, section twenty of the general laws, thereby reducing the amount authorized to be borrowed to pay such costs by a like amount. Do I have a motion? Do I have a second? Once again, I will call on Selectman Stanley.
So, this motion will require, even if it passes tonight, will require a vote that will be scheduled at a later date to approve the purchase. This is for a new dump truck for the Highway Division of the Department of Public Works, it's a planned replacement and upgrade, borrowing will be outside the levy, that requires the next vote, another vote. The impact on taxes is two cents per thousand, and will cost the average single-family home six dollars and thirty-four cents per year. This does replace the oldest truck currently in the fleet, number nineteen, which is a two-thousand-one F-350 with a hundred-two thousand miles. These trucks are the workhorse, so to speak, of the DPW and are used every day of the year, whether it's piling snow or maintaining roads in the session in the summertime. Any questions?
How many F-50s does a highway department hold?
John, do you know, off the top of your head?
Not at the top of the head, I wanna know the figure. How many?
Abe, do you know that number?
I believe four or five right now, and because of the GVW, the trucks, we've been replacing the F-250s, the F-350s, and I think we have one F-450 with the F-50s, so they can carry a little bit more weight.
What's the largest trucks you guys got there?
Uh, ten-wheelers, largest one, and that one's, Jesus, that thing's probably already ten years old.
Why are you invested in these little tinker toys? When you're hauling material in and out, you're hauling with wheelbarrows.
It all depends on the job, John. If we need a bigger truck, we use a bigger truck, if we need a smaller truck, we use a smaller.
Well, you seem to be buying all these small toys. Could I remind everyone to please frame questions to me, the moderator, and then, so we don't have a back and forth, to keep a orderly fashion. Edwin?
Yes, dear. Just to clarify things, this, this, this motion will be proposition two and a half, override?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you, just wanted to clarify.
All right. Any other, any other questions for six E? Seen none, all in favor, please signify with your red card. Thank you. Opposed? Abstentions? Six E passes one thirty-six to two with no abstentions. Motion six F, school equipment. Move that the town appropriate fifty-five thousand four hundred to pay the cost of replacing cafeteria equipment for the school department, including the payment of all costs incidental and related thereto, that to meet this appropriation, the treasurer with the approval of the select board is authorized to borrow said amount under and pursuant to chapter forty-four, section seven, one of the general laws, or pursuant to any other enabling authority into issue bonds or notes of the town therefore, provided however that the vote taken here under shall be expressly contingent upon the approval by the voters to exclude the amounts to pay for the bonds or notes authorized for this purpose from the provisions of proposition two and a half so-called. Any premium received by the town upon the sale of any bonds or notes approved by this vote, lest any such premium to, to the payment of the cost of the issuance of such bonds or notes, may be applied to the payment of costs approved by this vote in accordance with chapter forty-four, section twenty of the general laws, thereby reducing the amount authorized to be borrowed to pay any such costs by a like amount. Do I have a motion? Do I have a second? Once again, this will require a ballot vote for two and a half, and I'll call on Selectman Stanley.
This motion is to pay for new cafeteria equipment at Hopkins Academy. I believe it's primarily a freezer replacement, and I can have Chris address any questions in the back, if you would like more specifics, I don't know, Chris, do you wanna say something real quick? This is a planned replacement and upgrade, borrowing will be outside of the levy, so if this is approved tonight, it'll go to another ballot vote. The impact on taxes is one-point-three cents per thousand, and will cost the average single-family home four dollars and eighteen cents per year. Chris, go ahead.
Sure. The freezer and coolers in Hopkins, the freezer is rusted through, and so the floor, basically has no floor. The cooler, the positioning of the two, freezer and cooler, you have to move the cooler to get the freezer, so they decided, we should probably just replace both of them at the same time, which seems to be a good idea, we just lost a whole cooler full of vegetables when they froze, so at this point in time, the equipment is just failing, it's just time for, you know, a new cooler or freezer. These are the walk-in units, they're not just a small refrigerator. I don't know, but they're very old.
Chris, why don't you introduce yourself for anybody who doesn't know who you are and what you do?
I am the business manager of the school district, so I handle the school's finances.
Thank you. Any questions for motion six F? Seen none, all in favor, please signify with your red card. Opposed? Thank you. Abstentions? Article six F passes one thirty-seven to one with zero abstentions. Thank you. Six G, once again, it's the school department, and it's gonna be within the levy borrowing. Move that the town appropriate ninety-eight thousand dollars to pay costs of health and security upgrades for the school department, including the payment of all costs incidental and related thereto, that to meet this appropriation, the treasurer with the approval of the select board is authorized to borrow said amount under and pursuant to chapter forty-four, section seven, one of the general laws, or pursuant to any other enabling authority to the issuance of bonds or notes of the town therefore. Any premium received by the town upon the sale of any bonds or notes approved by this vote, lest any such premium apply to the payment of the cost of the issuance of any such bonds or notes, may be applied to the payment of costs approved by this vote in accordance with chapter forty-four, section twenty of the general laws, thereby reducing the amount authorized to be borrowed to pay any such costs by a like amount. Do I have a motion? Do I have a second? It's been moved and seconded, once and again, I will call on Selectman Stanley.
This motion is to borrow to pay for new security and health upgrades at both elementary school and Hopkins Academy. Borrowing for this will be within the levy, and there are no impact on taxes. Given today's time, just, there's been some needs identified to improve safety in the school and security, and so these are upgrades to address those needs. And that's about all I wanna say on it, I don't know if there are questions, maybe folks from the school can answer questions about this further.
Thank you. Any questions? Seen none? Opposed?
Tony, if I'm cold spring lane, I just, we don't have any specifics here, we have some general, general information, I know that maybe you can go into great detail, but it's a lot of money to spend without no specifics, my other part of the question was, as this was being developed, was the, was Chief Mason consulted as this subject, he helped develop or what was the process for getting this, developing this?
Thank you. Can you give us some background on this, Chris? Without giving away the...
Sure, the police department visited the schools, they came up with a list of items that they suggested we take care of to strengthen the security of the buildings. This is not the entire list, but it is a good portion of the items that they recommended. I can't really get into specifics, school security is one of those items, even at school committee meetings, they discuss it in executive session. But there are items, you know, door locks, additional cameras, items like that, that we would be using, there's others as well, but, you know, again, I hesitate to give into too much detail.
Thank you very much. Any other questions? All in favor, signify with your red card. Thank you. Opposed? One. Abstentions? Zero. Six G passes one thirty-seven to one with no abstentions. In our final, motion six H, I don't think we've ever had an H after a motion, but we're breaking new ground here. Move that the town appropriate eighty thousand dollars to pay costs for, of a van for the council on aging, including the payment of all costs incidental and related thereto, and to meet this appropriation, the treasurer with the approval of the select board is authorized to borrow said amount under and pursuant to section twenty, uh, chapter forty-four, section seven, one of the general laws, or pursuant to any other enabling authority into issue bonds or notes of the town therefore. Any premium received by the town upon the sale of any bonds or notes approved by this vote, lest any such premium apply to the payment of the cost of the issuance of such bonds or notes, may be applied to the payment of costs approved by this vote in accordance with chapter forty-four, section twenty of the general laws, thereby reducing the amount authorized to be borrowed to pay any such costs by a like amount. Do I have a motion? Do I have a second? Once again, Selectman Stanley.
Okay, this motion borrows to pay for a new van for the council on aging. The current van dates from two thousand and seven, and has mileage over fifty thousand miles. This is a planned upgrade, borrowing for this will be within the levy. The current van, I know, is in rough shape, the floor is rusted out on it in sections, and it's also been increasing in repair costs over the past several months, so it's a needed upgrade.
Any questions? Seen none, all in favor, please signify with your red card. Thank you. Anybody opposed? Any abstentions? One abstention? So article six H passes one thirty-seven to zero with one abstention. Thank you, moving along. Article seven. Article seven reads, to see if the town will vote to transfer twenty-three thousand from the Community Preservation Act Historic Preservation Set Aside to the Hadley Cemetery Committee for the preservation and restoration of the historic gravestones in Hockenham Cemetery, seventeen sixty-seven, located between one ninety-one and two ninety-nine Hockenham Road, Hadley, Mass. zero-one-zero-three-five, in accordance with the proposal presented in the August twenty-seventh meeting at the Community Preservation Act Committee. Said expenditures to be conducted within two years of the date of the two thousand and eighteen Fall Town Meeting, November first of two thousand and twenty, or unspent funds will be, automatically be returned to the appropriate CPA fund by that date, or to take any action relative thereto. This is recommended five-zero by the select board, is recommended three-zero by the Finance Committee, and is recommended nine-zero with no abstentions by the Community Preservation Act Committee. A motion for this article reads, move that the town transfer twenty-three thousand from the Community Preservation Act Historic Preservation Set Aside Funds for preservation and restoration of the historic gravestones at Hockenham Cemetery. It's located between one ninety-one and two ninety-nine Hockenham Road, Hadley, Mass. zero-one-zero-three-five, in accordance with the proposal presented at the August twenty-seventh, I believe that's this year, right David? Twenty-eighteen meeting of the Hadley Preservation Act Committee. Said expenditures to be conducted within two years of the date of the two thousand and eighteen Fall Town Meeting, which is tonight, so that date will be November first, two thousand and twenty. two thousand and twenty, or unspent funds will be automatically returned to the appropriate CPA fund by that date. Do I have a motion?
Don't move.
Do I have a second?
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. I will call on the CPA committee to speak to this article if they so desire, or if there's any questions. Andy's the chair. Our cemetery committee, even better.
I'm Alan Weinberg, Cemetery Committee Chair, and I want to thank the CPA committee for helping us with this. The town of Hadley owns and operates five historic and very beautiful town cemeteries, but many of the older stones in the cemeteries are, have fallen or in need of restoration. We're asking, we have, we have a plan for the Hakonum Cemetery provided for us through generosity of the Fayor family. We'd like to proceed with implementing that plan, and that would require using the twenty-three thousand dollars from CPA to get this done this year. Any questions?
Thank you very much. Any questions? Somewhere Fred Oakley would be proud of this article. Shell?
Shell Harwood, sixteen Barstow Lane in Hakonum Village. I would just like to mention that our last meeting of the Hakonum Villagers Association, the Fayors outlined what this plan would look like, who the experts of this group are doing the work, how happy they were with the results so far, and the entire village association thought this was a good idea.
Thank you very much. Any other questions? Seeing none. All who support this article, please signify with your red card. Thank you. Anyone opposed? Thank you. Any abstentions? Motion for article seven passes one hundred and thirty-seven to one with no abstentions. Article eight is also CPA article. Article reads, "To see if the town will transfer twelve thousand dollars from the Community Preservation Historic Preservation Set Aside to the Hadley Cemetery Committee to conduct the study of possible restoration and conservation work to the historic town-owned cemeteries to include Plainville, Russellville, North Hadley, and Old Hadley's Central Section Cemeteries in accordance with the proposal presented in the August twenty-seventh meeting of the Community Preservation Act Committee. Said expenditures to be conducted within two years of the date of the two thousand and eighteen Fall Town Meeting, November first, two thousand and twenty, or unspent funds will be automatically returned to the appropriate CPA fund by that date, or to take any action thereto. Select board recommends this five-zero, finance committee recommends it three-zero, community preservation act committee recommends it nine-zero. The official motion reads, "Move that the town transfer twelve thousand dollars from, excuse me, from the Community Preservation Act Historic Set Aside Funds to conduct the study of the possible restoration and conservation work to the historic town-owned cemeteries to include, include Plainville, Russellville, North Hadley, and Old Hadley's Central Section Cemeteries in accordance with the proposal presented in the August twenty-seventh meeting of the Community Preservation Act. Said expenditures to be conducted within two years of the date of the two thousand and eighteen Fall Town Meeting, November first, two thousand and twenty, or unspent funds will automatically be returned to the appropriate CPA fund by this date. Do I have a motion?
Don't move.
Do I have a second? Thank you. Once again, this is the cemeteries. I'll entertain any questions. Chairman?
So unlike Hakonum, the other cemeteries do not yet have a plan or a survey of what exactly needs to be done to ensure that the gravestones and this twelve thousand dollars will help us hire a professional gravestone conservator to take a look at the cemeteries and tell us exactly what needs to be done and give us an estimate of how much that would be, and after that, we'll be back to the CPA for help with actually implementing that probably next year. I should add that it's been several years, actually many years, since this kind of work has been done in the cemetery. Calling back to Fred Oakley's time.
Thank you, Mr. Weinberg. Any questions? Seeing none. All in favor, please signify with your red card. Thank you. Anybody opposed? Any abstentions? Article eight passes unanimously. Article nine. Article nine reads, "To see if the town will vote to transfer twenty-six thousand dollars from the Community Preservation Historic Preservation Set Aside to the Board of Directors of the North Hadley Congregational Church for additional restoration and conservation work of the steeple and roof area of the church located at twelve Mount Warren Road, Hadley, Mass. zero-one-zero-three-five, in accordance with the proposal presented in the August twenty-seventh meeting of the Community Preservation Act Committee. Said expenditures to be conducted within two years of the date of the two thousand and eighteen Fall Town Meeting, November first, two thousand and twenty, or unspent funds will be automatically returned to the appropriate CPA fund by that date, or take any action thereto. This is recommended five-zero by the select board, three-zero by the finance committee, and it's recommended by the Community Preservation Act Committee, eight-four-one against with no abstentions. The motion for article nine reads, "Move that the town transfer twenty-six thousand dollars from the Community Preservation Historic Preservation Set Aside to the Board of Directors of the North Hadley Congregational Church for additional restoration and conservation work of the steeple and roof area of the church located at twelve Mount Warren Road, Hadley, Mass. zero-one-zero-three-five, in accordance with the proposal presented in the August twenty-seventh meeting of the Community Preservation Act Committee. Said expenditures to be conducted within two years of the date of the two thousand and eighteen Fall Town Meeting, November first, two thousand and twenty, or unspent funds will automatically be returned to the appropriate CPA fund by that date. Do I have a motion? Do I have a second? And... Would somebody like to speak to this CPA committee?
Grace Pozelski, thirty-two Hakonum Road, Hadley. I'm a trustee of the church. I just want, first of all, I wanted to correct the address. It's two-four-three River Drive. It's not Mount Warren.
I didn't think it was, but two-four-three.
River Drive.
All right, well, before we go down, and I'll reread it with the correct address. Go ahead. It's within the scope. Does anybody have any questions? Because you're not, you're not changing the article. You're just, it was, it's, it's an error in the printing. Okay. Is there any questions to the content of the motion for article nine? Seeing none. All who support the motion for article nine, please signify with your red card. Thank you. Any opposition? None. Any abstentions? One. So motion for article nine passes one thirty-seven to zero with one abstention. Moving on to article ten. Article ten, "To see if the town will vote to authorize the Department of Public Works to have primary responsibilities for the operation, management, and care of the town's cemeteries and to amend the vote of February twenty-eighth, nineteen twenty-eight, articles thirty and thirty-one," so that it shall read as follows. "Voted, the town authorized the select board to appoint a cemetery committee of five members, each to a term of three years, and further authorize the committee to advise and assist the Department of Public Works in the operation, management, and care of the town's cemeteries, including but not limited to the sale of lots, or take any action relative thereto." Select board recommended this four-zero with one abstention. Finance committee recommends this three-to-zero. The motion reads, "Move that the town authorize the Department of Public Works to have primary responsibility for the operation, management, and care of the town's cemeteries and to, excuse me, amend the vote of February twenty-eighth, nineteen twenty-eight, articles thirty and thirty-one," so that it shall read as follows. "Voted that the town authorize the select board to appoint a cemetery committee of five members, each for the term of three years, and further authorize the committee to advise and assist the Department of Public Works in the operation, management, and care of the town's cemeteries, including but not limited to the sale of lots." Do I have a motion? Do I have a second? It's been moved and seconded. I will call on selectmen Phil to speak to this.
I'll let the cemetery chair go into details, but basically all this does is formalizes the relationship between the DPW and the cemetery committee, which has been a very informal arrangement over the years and rely on a lot of volunteerism.
This is something that the cemetery committee, the past cemetery committees and present cemetery committees very much want to have happen, and we've had discussions with DPW and the town administrator and worked out the respective roles and responsibilities. In nineteen twenty-eight, the town constituted the current cemetery committee, gave them the responsibility for care and operation of the cemeteries, and then in two thousand and nine, when DPW was, the charter was accepted by the town, the language in that charter essentially gives the DPW the authority to run the cemeteries as well as our buildings and grounds and public works facilities. But the language is a little bit ambiguous and has never fully been fully implemented. It's been, as David mentioned, the operation of the cemetery is really like a somewhat informal relationship and cooperation, which has been great between DPW and, and the cemetery committee. But going forward, we really need to nail it down, and in order to ensure that the operation of cemeteries are done in a consistent way and with this continuity, you need to put the DPW in charge of the operations and give the cemetery committee an advisory and an assistant role. So we're not, the cemetery committee is not going to be going away or being abolished, but we're just clarifying that we're the assistants and to give advice and assistance as we can to the DPW. The DPW will be the ones that control the budget and makes the decisions about how these get done there. The final decisions.
Thank you. Any questions? All in favor of the motion for article ten, signify with your red card. Thank you. Anyone opposed? Any abstentions? Article, the motion for article one for October eighteenth, two thousand and eighteen, and incorporated by references herein. Do I have a motion? With the correction, so the correct subsection, I won't repeat it, is going to be nineteen point two point seven. Do I have a second? Thank you. I'll call on James Maximowski, chairman of planning.
Thank you. Planning board does not recommend this article, and just to correct, what the moderator said, this was not presented by the planning, this not, planning board did not author, author, author this article. It came from the board of selectmen. We don't know where it came from because we didn't have that information. We originally thought it was a petition article, but the town clerk informed me it was not a petition article, so the second can address where it came from. Anyways, a little bit of history. The village Overlake District was created in two thousand and one. There was a committee of the historical commission, business people, townspeople, and planning board, and they present, they got together and from the bridge, from the cooling bridge to the bike path was the area of concern. How can we maintain this area to have a colonial appearance? And it was decided to have horizontal siding. If windows were going to be on there, it should be like double-hung windows or windows with mullions, and the roofs should have a shingle appearance. It could be brick siding and stuff like that. Prohibited exterior appearances were vertical siding and roofs that did not have a shingle appearance. This article is really to allow standing metal seam roofs. The planning board, and myself included, had no problem with a standing metal seam roof. However, it is not a colonial appearance. It is up to this town meeting. If you want to maintain the colonial appearance from the bridge to the bike path, then probably shingle, shingle appearance is important. And the reason we say appearance is the zoning bylaws do not have authority to regulate materials of construction, only appearances. So we're saying, that's what we keep saying, appearance throughout the bylaw. They make asphalt shingles, they make roofs that are made of metal and have a shingle, slate roofs, those all have a shingle and have a shingle appearance. So it's up to you. Do you want to keep the colonial look or, you know, standing metal, metal seam in many people's opinion is not a colonial appearance, and that's what this is about.
Thank you. Jane Evans Smith.
Hi, Jane Evans Smith, sixteen Sunrise Drive. What this article is, and I really don't know who put it on, I think it was the select board, but in any event, if you look at the town center right now, the town hall has a standing seam metal roof, the first church has a metal seam roof, the Hooker School has a metal standing seam roof. Any building that replaces their roof can use standing seam. New buildings cannot. So this would just equal the playing field, and everyone agrees that a standing seam metal roof is the best way to build right now.
Thank you. Questions, comments? Phil.
William Dewire from the planning board. So there are a couple of things. Some people may be aware that the original design for the senior center did call for a standing seam roof, and I believe that is part of the genesis of how this article got to the planning board and got to town meeting. However, at a meeting of the planning board, the owner's project manager for the senior center said that they are no longer recommending or requesting a standing seam metal roof for cost. They are planning to go with shingles. So that was part one of why I voted against recommending this. The second part is that the bylaw as a whole probably is ripe for a reexamination. For example, as Jim mentioned, the bylaw prohibits vertical siding. Half my house is board and baton siding, and if you know what my house looks like, you would not, you would agree, it, it looks pretty colonial. But board and baton siding is vertical and would not be allowed under the bylaw. So I think we really need to do is have a, you know, get back to some of the roots of why we adopted the design criteria for the village center overlay, and we could revisit that and take it up as a whole and not piecemeal.
Okay, Shell Harwood, sixteen Barstow Lane. First, I want to thank planning board member Maximowski for explaining what's different about this language, because this doesn't give us a before and after, only an after, and I'm going to request that we get a summary like that for each of the articles affecting the various zoning changes that are being suggested as they come up. And number two, just to comment that I don't live in the historic center district, but I do live in a historic district. We put on a new roof in a house that was built in seventeen forty-three, and we did not even investigate the pricing of single seam metal roofs because we just felt it was incompatible with the aesthetics. was incompatible with the aesthetics of the district. So having heard that explanation, I will be voting against.
Somers Street in forty-five Roosevelt Street. I have a little question about the difference between a single seam metal roof and say an old tin roof, which can fit into the historic district, and I have a comment to do there.
Uh-oh, what kind of a roof?
Like an old tin roof. It could go up to Covington, a lot of very old houses have metal roofs on them, but not the modern.
Yeah, but they have.
A lot of the old metal roofs in town had a shingle appearance to them. There's some old barns that have it, and even some of the roofs that were replaced in the center had a metal roof that had a shingle appearance to it. They were, they were replaced with standing metal seam roofs. Okay. So the original roof did have a, like I said, it's not a matter of materials of construction because they do make metal roofs that have a shingle appearance to them. They're a little bit strange looking, but they still have a basic shingle appearance.
I generally support the appearance of older architecture in town, but to me, metal roofs are not creating. The other thing is that in the long run, even though they're very expensive to put on now, they require a lot less work. And I wish twenty-one years ago I had put a metal roof on, and it was more affordable because I'm looking at re-roofing before the twenty-five year point. So we look at the long-term costs for the town, for the senior center, that's something to consider. And just another comment too, sometimes with the, I support the Historic District, but sometimes we gussy up buildings with colonial attributes like the Franz Market that don't really belong on the building or hold too fast to it. And I don't think that's always a good idea.
Thank you.
Tony Bygwell Spring. I don't think it's a small point that we still don't have any background about where this petition came from. Nobody seems to be advocating for it specifically, so I don't think it's, it makes sense to vote for something that changes something, changes a plan that's been in place if, without any real background of, as far as the picking, why this was done and where it came from. Is anybody, anybody who could, is anybody able to stand up for it or advocate for it?
Apparently Chairman Chappell is going to comment.
The Select Board put it on for the reason of the senior center and not being able to, at the time, they were going to do a seam metal roof. Now they've changed it to shingles. So that's how it all came about. It stayed on the warrant, and people liked the idea that we would be able to have that option if we needed to for other buildings in the center of town.
I'm in favor of this, and I'm, Mr. Major, I'm on the Historical Society, and I'm very invested in making sure that the library has a nice historic look to it. But the, the, the metal seam roofs that are on the town buildings right now don't bother me. They don't look bad. And, and I think back when I, we did my house, A Road, which was over two hundred years old, that house, it had a metal roof. It had the old tin roof. That tin roof, folks, is not colonial. In fact, I don't know that shingles are colonial. Pretty shakes are, and I guess that looks like shingles. But the town center doesn't even, is not mostly colonial. It's mostly, it's historic, but it's the nineteenth century, not the eighteenth century. And, you know, things have changed and, and I think it's okay for us to make these changes if they're, especially if they're practical. It hasn't anything, it's a practical town. And standing steel, standing seam metal roof lasts practically forever. Those, those tins that I had on my house, eighty years old before I had to replace it. And that's because we didn't take care of it properly. But I'll, I say, I think this, this is a good thing to do, and I would advocate for it. I did not put it on, it was not a petition, but I like the idea. I also understand that, you know, there are, you know, it might be better to do it in a comprehensive way, you get the whole, the whole package of things, but this is something that could help us really, especially a town building, would save money in the long run.
Thank you.
Tim Nighery, sixteen Goget Drive, Building Commissioner. Certainly when I drive up through Vermont, New Hampshire, which we all think is colonial New England, we see standing seam roofs. It certainly is a huge benefit over all the old roofs, certainly back in the colonial days. They didn't have the ability to put on standing seam, but they did through the eighteen hundreds start getting into a metal roof system. The benefits, what we're trying to do is actually save the town money. If we have, if we have to replace roofs on municipal buildings, and you've seen all the ones that we've done so far are standing seam. The reason is, our prevailing wage is so expensive, we want to put on materials that will last. And certainly, standing seam roofs will last for an extremely long time. The other great benefit to them is solar. The great thing about them is that you clamp your solar panels on. You're not putting holes into your, your roof with a shingle. There are some metals out there that look like shingles, but they kind of look odd and they're panelized. So there are problematic issues with the seams leaking. I, I, I think we, yeah, we all want to see some colonial, I think that the buildings do look colonial. They also look very handsome, in my opinion, with the metal seam roof. The town halls and everything else. So it is just trying to get everything in some type of uniformity within the center of town. It's not, you know, opposing colonial appearance, but it's just trying to save us some money to do something that's looking forward and going forward with some of this stuff. Okay? Thank you.
Anne Stengel, forty-three Breckenridge. I just wanted to clarify, we were talking about, again, just to get my sense of this, we were talking about the shingle appearance as being a previous requirement, and now we're talking about all roofs shall be pitched, et cetera. There's no mention in the current proposal of single seam roof or whatever, I'm not even sure I'm using the right term, but it just seems like you could have any kind of roof material that you cannot specify, if I understand. So I'm just wondering what this does for us that still preserves a sense of the, of the overlay district, if there is wording in here that does that. And I'm missing.
The bylaw as written simply takes out the words that were in the prior bylaw of nineteen point two point seven. Currently reads, "All roofs shall be pitched. Minimum pitch shall be three inch vertical rise for twelve inch horizontal run. Roof coverings shall provide the appearance, exterior appearance of a shingle appearance. Methods and materials are not specified." That is the sentence that has been removed. All roof coverings shall provide the exterior appearance of a shingle appearance. Methods and materials are not specified. That's the only difference between what's in the bylaw today and what is being proposed, is that one sentence being removed, the shingles, roofs shall have a shingle appearance. The rest of the bylaw, or that one little section, is the same. The rest of the bylaw, which is two and a half pages long, covers other appearances and other colonial things. So it isn't like one little section covers the entire description of the Village Overlake. It's two and a half pages long. None of that else is being changed.
Thank you, Jim.
Tina Friedman, sixteen Barstow Lane. I've heard arguments, very good arguments on both sides of this issue, but I think that it's been important for the Planning Board to be here and hear a sense of the town and the concerns about this. And I personally like the idea of coming back rather than just, you know, kind of fixing things piecemeal, since there's no urgency right now about a specific building that needs this roofing. I'd like to see it come back, possibly as part of a bylaw that would examine, you know, this balance of maintaining colonial appearance and saving the town money.
I think this debate is good, or what, what's not good is the Board of Selectmen should have approached the Planning Board about this issue. And then we hold a hearing, you hold forums, and you get information. This, this is good information, but this should be done at a forum and at a hearing of the Planning Board, not at a town meeting, and to delay our business at a town meeting.
One of the things that bothers me when I see a standing seam roof on a historical building like the one I live in from seventeen forty-three is the garish colors. And I'm wondering if when the Planning Board does revise this ordinance, this bylaw, if they, if it's within your country to address what are permissible colors.
I believe, I believe it is within reason. We'd have to expect, we'd have to investigate exactly what the limits are. You just can't say, we can do this, we can't do that. But there are some reasonable limits on what we can impose on colors.
Thank you, Jim.
I don't want to prolong this, too long, but I have to say, garish colors. Have you ever looked at the Deerfield, some of the colors, the colors on the building in Deerfield? The colonial colors were garish.
Someone screaming forty-five Roosevelt Street. I'd like to ask the people involved in the senior center building, if this is pressing, if there's a change, it's possible there might be a change in the plan when they have to break ground. If it is pressing, it's possible we could pass this tonight and revisit it and refine it by Springtown, at Springtown meeting.
The knowledge from the senior center are for shingle roof.
Thank you, Jane. We'll see the answer. Any others? Seeing none, all in favor of the proposed change to, I'll reread the motion real quick. Moved at the town to mend the zoning bylaws of the code of the town having, as delineated in Article twelve of the special town meeting warrant for October eighteenth, twenty eighteen, and incorporated by references herein. All in favor signify with the red card, please. Opposed? So the final count is ninety-eight, four, thirty, against, with eleven abstentions. I did count.
You can't so quickly count the ninety-eight votes, just like that?
Oh, I counted the thirty, that's thirty nays and the eleven abstentions.
You cannot assume that some people did not put up a, you have to count.
What's that? Do I have eight people that questioned the vote or the counts that I took? That's one. Stand up.
I'm on the one.
I know who you are. All right, perfect. Everybody sit back down. We can stay here a little while longer. And I, and I am going to dock the Select Board at the next annual town meeting for twenty-five minutes for bringing this article up. I've done it in the past, I'll do it again. Okay. Who, who would like to be a counter? Tim, please, thank you. David Waskevitz, could you please count me a counter too? Does this require a prepared majority? Yes, it does. Tony, would you like to be a counter?
Sure.
And. Hey, you, hey, Mr. Ron, you clearly explained what you know. We don't need that. No. So you're going to count, and you're going to count, then you're going to confirm.
This section or here?
No. Actually, they're going to do that section and that section. I want you to do this section, the back table.
Okay.
Okay?
All right. All right. All things accounted, all things accounted.
So, Madam Clerk. All, if, all in favor of the motion for Article twelve, signify by raising your red card high so it can be counted by my counters. The head table, the column to my right, and the back table, you can put your parents down. They're counting. We're waiting for these two sections. We're waiting for these two sections. Thank you. Thank you, everybody. We're not going to count the abstentions, because for a two-thirds majority, if you abstain, it's like you're not voting. It doesn't count to two-thirds. So, the official vote, and I would like to thank all my counters, is 85 people said yes, and 39 people said no. So it does pass a two-thirds majority. Article 13 is a planning board article, and is going to be passed over. Article... Actually, Jim wants to talk about all these and then make a recommendation.
On Article 13, we will make a vote. We're going to pass it, but I want to explain why, so that everybody understands. There's two basically marijuana zoning articles out here. One is the actual bylaw, which is this one, and then the very last one, which is to extend the moratorium until June of 2019. The reason we want to pass over this article is the planning board has been working with the Pioneer Valley Planning Commission, and that's why I'm giving the marijuana bylaw. We've been working on that roughly since the bylaw, since the state voted to approve adult marijuana usage. The Pioneer Valley Planning Commission has been drawing one up. Several towns have adopted some form of it. We made a change to it, the kind of table that Hadley, it was sent to K.P. Law, which is a town council, for review. They made a bunch of changes to it. Not all the changes that were made and that we agree with, not that they were wrong, but we still know why they made the changes. So, rather than put something in today that we don't think may be the best for Hadley, we're going to, we're continuing to work on it. Attorney Bart has agreed to come to the planning board meeting, the date to be announced, where he will work with us and explain why this was done, why we can do this, why we can't do that. So at the spring town meeting, we'll be looking at this again. So this passed, and we passed over for that reason.
Is that the same with Articles 14 and 15?
No.
Okay. All right, so we're going to pass over Article 13. Article 14, once again, is a planning board article. So I'll have Jim. Let me get to it. So I'll have Jim Maxmouski, Chairman of the Planning Board, speak to Article 14.
This is a general bylaw. This is not a zoning bylaw. This is a majority vote to pass, not a two-thirds majority to vote to pass. This bylaw regulates how many marijuana retail, adult marijuana retail establishments can be based at Hadley. And it's based on the, basically, package store sale, if I correct, is that right? Yes. Okay, so now that it's 20% of the package stores in the town, we can have that many fraction retail establishments. So I think we have seven, seven pack, seven package stores that have licenses. So therefore, it comes out to be something like 20% of seven, it's like 1.3 or 1.4. You round up that figure to two, so we can have two retail establishments. As the number of retail package stores increases or decreases, then the retail marijuana establishment will likewise fluctuate. Originally, we were going to put this into the zoning bylaw. The Attorney General recommends that this particular, either be a general bylaw, for whatever reason. Maybe Joel can explain it better, because we're just going to make what was recommended by the Attorney General.
Okay, Joel Bart.
Mr. Moderator, Joel Bart, Town Council. I just want to add one thing. Everything Jim said, of course, was accurate, but the reason for the 20% is putting it in a bylaw, and I can talk for a second about general zoning, is that for any community that wants to limit it to fewer than 20%, you need a ballot question. So by putting it at 20%, then you don't need the ballot question. That's important information to have. As to general zoning, it could be invoked. A number of towns were putting it, some towns started putting it in the zoning bylaw, and then some towns put it in the general bylaw, and the Attorney General approved those. So it just seemed to make sense to put it in the general bylaw, since it only requires a simple majority.
Thank you.
Just to be clear, that would then require, allow Hadley to have a minimum of two retail establishments. The Board of Select, I believe, could always decide to have more than that, or is it only two?
It's worth it.
Okay, that's, okay, so they could only have two.
Are we passing over, right? We're not that? I was told we were passing over Article 14.
No, that was mine.
Okay.
That's the Board of Select's decision, not ours.
Okay, so, the motion for Article 14 is going to read, "Move that the town amend the bylaws of the code of the town Hadley as delineated in Article 14 of the special town meeting warrant for October 18, 2018, and incorporated by the references herein." What happened? You want me to read the whole section? Okay. All right, Article 14, "See if this town will vote to amend Chapter 36 of the general bylaws of the town Hadley to include a new section." Section 36-3, "Limited on the number of adult-use retail establishments." "The number of adult-use marijuana retail establishments permitted to be located within the town Hadley shall not exceed 20% of the number of licenses issued within the town for the retail sale of alcoholic beverages not to be drunk on the premise where sold under Chapter 138 of the general laws. For the purposes of determining this number, any fraction shall be rounded up to the next highest total number, or take any action thereto." Now I'll read the motion again. "Move that the town amend the bylaws of the code of the town Hadley as delineated in Article 14 of the special town meeting warrant for October 18, 2018, and incorporated by the references herein." Do I have a motion?
Motion.
I have a second.
Second.
Okay, discussion.
And with the two 116th chapters, we, I don't know if I should address the planning board.
We don't trust me, and no answer.
Okay.
Maybe.
Just a wild pregnostication. Assume we need three package stores. Will the town have the authority to close down one of these establishments?
I'd say no.
Or four, or a dozen.
We would have to get down below 1.00001 or something for them to even say that. And that's probably, that's the question, I don't know.
The answer's no. If they had the license, the only way they would lose it is through, they wouldn't be a, by a package store, they'd lose one.
Right. Yeah, would the town have the authority to close down a retail marijuana? Joel Bart.
Hey, Moderator, Joel Bart. So it becomes a, once, they would have been legal when they got the license, and the fact that the license gate shifted would not deprive them of the license, so they would get to keep the license.
Tim Christian, 43, Roosevelt Street. I just have a point of order. Mr. Moderator, must you read each article twice? Can we just read it once and say all the times?
I read the article, especially because there's language in these, and then I read the motion. Sometimes there's a difference between the two.
Can we just read the motion?
Absolutely.
So the select board, a few months ago, voted unanimously to limit the number of retail marijuana licenses in town to two licenses. Our goal was to decouple the number of marijuana retail licenses from liquor licenses, so we didn't have to use the ratio. My understanding is that to do that would need a ballot vote and town meeting vote. So that was our goal as a board, because we would like the ability to increase and decrease liquor licenses without having to worry about impacting marijuana licenses and possibly increasing them. So that was our goal as a board. Unfortunately, we didn't get that together in time for this town meeting. So maybe something we can work on for spring town meeting, but we wanted to err on the side of caution, rather than just kind of overplay gates to kind of paraguay or something.
Hi, there, 179 Hospital Room. I'm a little confused about what a yes and no vote means. Yes seems to be limited to 20%. Does no vote mean anything to no limit? I just wasn't sure what, if this was defeated, what that means.
That's correct. So a yes vote would put this into the bylaw, where it would set a maximum of 20%. And if this bylaw was voted down, then it wouldn't exist. Correct. That's correct.
So there would be no limit.
There would be no limit at this time. Any other questions? Hearing none, all in favor of the motion for Article 14, 265, with the red card? Thank you. Opposed? One, two, three. Thank you. Four. Article 14 passes 127 to four with zero abstentions. Article 15 is a very long article, deals with penalties for consumption of marijuana public base and places. I will allow people, I will allow people to read it. Okay, next one. The select board has decided to pass over Article 15, so we'll move on to 16.
Mr. Moderator, here is a typo in 21.1.3. The last line can read "Spring 2019," instead of "Fall." We will bring it back for the Spring 2019 Annual Town Meeting. Last line of the first full paragraph in Article 14.
Okay, Article 16. I'll give everybody a few minutes to read that, and then I will read the motion. This is for zoning, extension of adult-use marijuana moratorium. It's brought forth by the planning board, correct?
Zoning by law.
Zoning by law. Just so everybody's aware, the last line of 21.1.3 is going to read, and to present it at the annual, the Spring 2019 Annual Town Meeting, instead of get rid of Fall and get rid of Special, and put it in Spring, correct?
Correct.
Okay, so the motion will read, "Move that the town amend the zoning bylaws of the code of the town Hadley as delineated in Article 16, with the changes I just referenced, of the special town meeting warrant of October 18, 2018, and incorporated by the references herein." Do I have a motion? I have a second. I will ask James Maxmouski, Chairman of the Planning Board.
The planning board recommends this Article 4.0 with one absent, and obviously, with the marijuana bylaws, we need to extend the moratorium. Otherwise, it would become a free call, and we would have nothing with effectively. When this moratorium runs out, and you deliver.
Thank you, Jim. Questions, concerns? Seeing none, all in favor, please signify with the red card. Thank you. Any abstentions? Article 16 passes unanimously. At this time, I would like to once again thank the brothers club, and the providing freshmen at the town meeting. I would thank everyone for coming out. And at this time, Article 15, a motion to adjourn. Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Motion to adjourn.